Good evening, everyone. Welcome to July eleventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Everybody raise for the potential allegiance.
Thank you.
All right, Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bowd, Councilmember Sherman, Councilmember Gutierrez, Marinesco, Deputy Mayor Schmidt, Councilmember McDowell,
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. I forgot to ask if anybody needed any amplify headphones for the meeting. If you do, just raise your hand. Nope, okay. Does council have any late changes to the agenda? All right, council have any board reports to share? No, I just wanted to mention that, I know everybody knows, we had a two-hundred-and-fifty-acre fire that came within yards of burning down neighborhoods. Because of quick response from our first responders, not a home was lost. And I want to give a shout out to Central Mason Fire, the many in and out of county fire districts, DNR, Green Diamond, Mason County Sheriff's, State Patrol, Department of Emergency Management, MaceCom, many airplane supply, or supertankers that put chemicals on the fire and water. We have water planes. I want to thank Red Cross, the YMCA, and a little bit of middle school for opening their doors, Ridge Motorsports for opening up their property for camping, and all the people that open up their doors to family, friends, and strangers, and take it in their livestock. It's always really amazing to see us come together. Just think what else we can, we could do together, the problems we could solve. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda? We have a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right, moving along. Public Works Director Jay Harris has detailed scores about the final acceptance for the particular parking lot.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So, last July, the city engineering department opened a couple bids, and Miles Resources was selected as the low bidder, which council subsequently approved for five-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. In September last year, they commenced construction. They were pretty much done by the end of November. They had some striping and some other cleanup they needed to do. And so they came back in April to stripe out the court. In the meantime, between November and April, city staff was out there doing all sorts of things. We've installed landscaping was, was the big part. Parks did a big part of that. Our stormwater division, sewer, other people jumped in, did a lot of work in there to really make that project happen. The final amount paid to the contractor was four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents over the signed contract. So that was good. We stayed within budget within, because we put a ten percent contingency on projects. So that was good. In terms of funding, we did receive a state of Washington Department of Commerce grant for two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand for the project. The Lions Club, forty-two-hundred dollars. And we also used TBD funds, some money from the general fund, and some money from the storm drainage fund to make this project a reality. If you remember the conceptual design, it was just a paved parking lot with a stormwater pond over to the side. And when we took it to council with their direction, we went to permeable pavers and that sort of thing, which increased the project cost, but we were able to pull it off. So it was a great project for the city. So there's a motion tonight to put the resolution on the action agenda for future consideration. But let's go through the slideshow first. So the aerial view of the parking lot prior to construction, and you can see off to the right there, the whole thing was gravel. And the former site was, what was the name of the gym?
Lincoln Gym.
Lincoln Gym. Did you play basketball in there? You did.
Yes.
Probably other people remember the Lincoln Gym. So it was a gravel parking lot. When we got to it, lower left is started construction. That was for the sports court. And then you can see the parking lot, starting construction there. That's the grading. Next slide, please. And here's a whole bunch of concrete work in the top left. And then they started to spread some gravel out into the parking lot. You can see at the top of the upper right picture there, they're starting to move that real granular fiddle out there that allows the permeable pavers to soak down through pretty easy. And you can see the underlying soils are pretty conducive. We had some infiltration tests down on them to make sure we get a long service life, so the water continues to go away. You can see the bottom left is sports court. And then on the bottom right is putting a bunch of curving in. Next slide. So there's a continuation of spreading the gravel top left. And then the, the, the top right there, all over in the corner, is where they started the pavers for the lot. We had a contest for how many pavers actually ended up going down in the lot. I can't remember the number. I'll email it to you guys. So it.
I don't remember.
Did you run the contest? You did. You can't remember it either. But there was a lot of favors that went down at that parking lot. Anyways, the last project I saw, they did them with a machine. These were placed pretty much by hand. So there was a lot of labor. Miles did a great job. So you can see bottom left them going in. The line control is pretty good. If you go out there and walk around, you can see the lines are pretty straight. They moved around a little bit. But even with cars driving on them, they still look really, really good. Next slide. So our guys went out and did the parking lot striping. And then the bottom left, we put those trees in and backfilled the mulch and in the planters. You can see that's a sports court striking down in the bottom right. I didn't realize the red was that red. There's something wrong with that picture, I think, but that stands out. I don't think it's that red. Next slide, please. So then the grass went in. That was actually a good upgrade. The idea for that came from the guys that, that put it in. We were gonna seed it and irrigate it. And it's like, you know, I think for that small grass, it's better just to buy turf. So it worked out really good there. We put some shrubs in. So then that was unveiling of the Lincoln Gym Memorial Court sign. The little, we called it Sunday's on Wednesday party. Council McDowell came up with that. And so then we did the ribbon cutting for the actual lot. And next slide. And then Farmers Market has been the primary user. Day-to-day city vehicles, the vehicles have moved out for the weekend. And Farmers Market is using it on Saturdays. I know there's plans for using the sports court a little more. I understood that, I guess, that Mason Transit has indoor pickleball that they might move out over there during the summer. I don't know if that's happened yet or not, but I'll let the folks here coordinate pickleball tournaments out there. It'd be a lot of fun. It's a great court. So everything's going good. Farmers Market has really taken off in there. This is a great venue for that. Great location. And with that, I look forward to any questions and a council resolution.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, is there kind of a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone in the audience that hasn't signed up, would like to speak on this? All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to forward, resolution number one-two-seven-four-dash-zero-six-two-three to the July eighteenth action agenda for further consideration.
Second. All right, comments or questions?
I have a comment. The basketball court that has the pickleball on it also, I was talking to a resident here in town, and she said her sister lives in Seattle and comes down here to play pickleball with friends on that court, because they think it's just awesome. So that was a good thing to do.
Yeah.
Good news.
Thank you. I know it was a long time coming.
It definitely elevated the farmer's market, taking it out of a parking lot and put it, put it on the.
Yeah.
It changed the whole feel of it.
Yep.
Thank you for you and your crew for seeing the project through and getting it completed and the four-hundred-and-eighty-three bucks.
A lot of hands went into completing this project. I was sort of the organizer. There was a lot of things that went on, including street trees that were wrong variety that were delivered. So we got that taken care of.
All right. Yes, Mary?
I think they made a great job. And I saw these guys bend over. And I shot down the part of construction work and I was given that I never seen both as fast as they did. Putting those bricks down the way they did, and I think they did a terrific job.
Yeah, they did. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second to place resolution number one-two-seven-four-dash-zero-six-two-three on the eighth, July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three action agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have another item from Director Harris. He had information for us about vacating Fifth Street between Grove Street and Coda.
Good evening, Council Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So I've spoke to council twice on this, the resolution, talking about this ordinance hearing. So state law requires us to post it well in advance with the prior two resolutions. So currently, the police department utilizes most of the parking out on Fifth Street. That's from Coda to Grove. They use the parking there. And we received a state grant to install some fencing around the police lot with electric gates on each side. And with the installation of the fencing, the public roadway will need to cease for public vehicular traffic. But the police will still be able to go in and out. The sidewalk on the east side is still going to remain open. And so we're proposing to vacate the right of way. And we'll keep a utility easement over the top of the vacated roadway to allow the gas and the storm and water lines and that sort of thing to continue going through there. And then we're also going to put a sidewalk easement over the, the public sidewalk that, that's proposed to remain open. That's the end of the staff presentation.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this issue? All right, they are reading ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, vacating Fifth Street between Grove and Coda.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to forward ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three to the July eighteenth city council meeting action agenda for further consideration.
Second it.
All right, comments or questions? No. We have a motion to second to forward ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three to the July eighteenth city council action agenda for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right. So I didn't open up a public hearing, Donna.
I know.
Did you do that? And then vote again?
You can open it and repeat the motion and then close it.
Okay, we're assessing from the regular meeting to open a public hearing. Now, we heard, we heard the presentation. Maybe we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to forward ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three to the July eighteenth action agenda for further consideration.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion to second to forward ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three to the July eighteenth city council action under further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right. Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. We'll open up the regular meeting. City manager.
We're opening another public hearing. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yep, and we're opening another public hearing. City Manager Mark Ziegler has information for us about updating the Shelton Municipal Code related to the police department.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. In looking through Shelton Municipal Code Title II, we found some inconsistencies with state, state law, RCWs, and inconsistencies within the own Shelton Municipal Code. So today I'm bringing to you chapter two-point-five-six, which directly relates to the police department establishment of the police department, the duties, the appointment of a police chief, and the duties of the department. So as you know, the city transitioned from a commission form to a council form of government. And most likely, at that point, the code was simply changed from the word commission to council. And there was instances where the actual reference to the council manager form of government was not incorporated into the code. So this is the first instance of that that I'm bringing to you today. You'll have other departments next week on the eighteenth. So this brings in two line, the police department, and specifically that city managers' authority to appoint, remove, at any time, all department heads, officers, and employees of the code city. So that cleans that up, as well as some other instances that were recommended by the city attorney to meet civil service laws and collective bargaining provisions. Open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Has anyone signed up for public testimony, Donna?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience that could speak on this? All right, maybe reading of ordinance number two-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-six-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-six-two-three, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, repealing and re-adopting chapter two-point-five-six of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to the police department.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Move to forward ordinance number two-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-six-two-three to the July eighteenth city council action agenda for further consideration.
Second. Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second to place ordinance number two-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-six-two-three on July eighteenth council meeting agenda for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed and we'll resume our regular meeting. All right, our last business item is a resolution approved city manager contract. Mark has details.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you all know, on June twentieth, the city council moved to appoint myself as city manager and for the mayor and deputy mayor to negotiate a contract. So for the first time, bringing that contract to the council tonight for consideration with resolution number one-two-seven-five-dash-o-six-two-three. And for further consideration, moving it to the action agenda next week on July eighteenth.
Thank you, Mark. Donna, has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience that could speak on this? Do we have a motion?
I move to place official number twelve-seventy-five-dash-zero-six-two-three on July two, council meeting action agenda for the consideration.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
It's a grueling negotiation, and we appreciate your flexibility as we move through it. So.
Long nights.
Yeah.
We didn't know we were gonna make it through later than I thought we did.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to second to place resolution of one-two-seven-five-dash-zero-six-two-three on the July eighteenth action agenda for the consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recreation Coordinator Jordan has information for us about a traffic box wrap project.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I bring to you again the four traffic box straps that we are wanting to install in next month at some points. And we want to give a big shout out to Martha Reed Foundation, Peninsula Art Association, and Shelton Rotary for their donations with this project. And we're just looking for final approval tonight.
Thank you, Jordan. Donna, has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anyone in the audience that could speak on this? All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the Shelton Arts Commission Traffic Box Office Project Recommended Artwork.
Second, comments or questions?
I love the wraps. I think they're the coolest things. Well, not the coolest, but they're up there. Yeah. They are very cool.
Someone asked me, how long do they stay up? And what is the life expectancy of those wraps?
Most of them can last about five to six years. And the first installation was back in twenty nineteen. So we haven't had all of the bat boxes yet in town. If we have two or three more. So after that, then we'll start a back order. Yep. Thanks, guys.
All right. We have a motion to second to approve the Shelton Arts Commission Traffic Box Wrap Project Recommended Artwork. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're moving on. Mark, will you give it to City Manager?
Certainly. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, I guess, echo your sentiments about the first responders and the fire that started on July fourth, as well as the fire that was started last Saturday as well, and the quick response there that it burned, you know, potentially, you know, some devastating effects as it moves to that power line corridor. We have well sites very close to that. There are schools close to it. Major infrastructure in that area, and our first responders getting on that so quickly and responding to that is surely, we surely are grateful for their efforts. And if you saw the mobilization of all of those crews up at, at Oakland Bay Junior High School, you realized how many of them were out in our community, helping us get through that, that event. Really great to have that take place. I want to touch bases on the fourteen-eleven railroad avenue incident a little bit. As you all know, the police activity that, that happened there recently, and the domestic violence incident, what led up to the, the police events. And really want to thank all the responders that showed up. We had Thurston County and Pierce County, Mason County, Washington State Patrol show up on that site. It was an effort that was needed, that was warranted based on the information that was provided to them. Know that suspect was not in the house, but nobody knew that at the time. And the, and the, the communication of that at that time was that somebody was still in there and they were still in there. So for the public safety, for our first responder safety, that was the effort that was required at that time. This is a residence that has been on the city's radar, if you will. It's not a great word, but we have been trying to enforce upon this structure for some time. The problem is, they have an absentee owner, a defunct LLC, an address that is not receiving mail anymore. So each time we respond or try to contact an owner, we get zero response. In the meantime, we have had a lack of code enforcement officers on staff and some difficulties with our hearing examiner services. So that has delayed some of the process in us being proactive in, in code enforcement on that and looking forward to abatement. I can tell you, we have some positive developments in the two instances, whereas we had a code enforcement officer start this week. Will Gano started this week, and will be working in code enforcement, practically enforcing our code once he gets up to speed. So we've got a little bit of training to do and work through that process. And then next week, you will have a opportunity to appoint a deputy hearing examiner. It gives us more flexibility within our code. There's the, there's the ability to appoint a hearing examiner and deputy hearing examiner. Hearing examiners are tough to come by these days. About two years ago, we put out an RFQ for hearing examiner services, and we received two responses. We really, one of them was a qualified response. We hired Mr. Reeves. Mr. Reeves took on a lot of work at the same time and got really busy, had some changes within his firm, and hasn't necessarily been able to meet some of our timelines that our code requires. We have to notify the property owner and have a hearing within a certain amount of time, you know, follow through with a process per code. We couldn't guarantee that was going to happen, so we did not follow through with that abatement up until this point. So next week, we'll have a resolution in front of you to appoint a deputy hearing examiner, provides that flexibility. We can move forward with some abatement proceedings on that property and other properties as, as warranted. So we really look forward to that and providing some of the, the relief to some of the neighborhoods that are impacted by these issues in our community. Please to announce as well that we'll have a new entry level patrol officer starting, starting fairly soon. So we don't have a date scheduled for the academy yet, but that, that person will come into the office and start some, start some training within the office. And then we'll get them in the academy as soon as we can and be able to fill one of the open patrol positions as soon as we can. Tomorrow, yeah, July twelfth, the Parks and Rec Field Day is being held down at Neyland Park from twelve to two. So our Parks and Recreation Department, Jordan, does a great job in providing some field activities and games for individuals, families. Might come down and have some fun for a couple hours down in Neyland Park. So it's been a great event last couple of years that Jordan's instituted that and look forward and encourage everybody to come down and visit that. Myself and Director Hill and Director Harris met with the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee earlier today to talk about some of the water issues. Very productive conversation. Another opportunity to communicate with our community, our building community, our government, government affairs committee, and the transparency that we have within the City of Shelton and the issues that we're dealing with on a daily basis. So we're happy to provide that information to any organization out there that would like to have us come and talk about what's happening here in the city and, you know, some of the successes and challenges that we're facing on a daily basis. Our comprehensive plan, update RFP, request for proposals went out this week. So we look forward to receiving responses to that, that request in the next couple of weeks and getting a consultant on board to lead us through that process. Let's see, and then Movies in the Park starts Friday. So Jumanji is scheduled for this Friday. We can't give a specific time. As we know, you know, the light's different all the time outside. But as soon as it's dark enough, that movie will start down in Neyland Park. Typically, I think last year was pretty cool. This time of year was pretty close to nine o'clock, a little after nine o'clock. So a little late, but it's worth it. It's on a Friday night. You can stay up a little late and watch a movie outside in the park. I also want to communicate with the council and our, and our community. A new bill that was recently passed about utility shut-offs during heat warnings and heat advisories. So this bill prohibits local jurisdictions from shutting off utilities during these heat warnings and heat advisories. So communications are going out to our community notifying them of this opportunity. If the National Weather Service institutes a heat advisory, heat warning, then those individuals can contact the city, have their water turned on, or we would not go out and shut off those, those services for non-payment at that time. So that's being provided to them through the door hanging or process, and we'll also have some press out as well to communicate that to the public. So they know that opportunity is out there, and hopefully we don't have too many of those heat warnings and heat advisories this summer coming up. So that is all I have for you tonight.
Mark, can you give us a brief timeline on a property like four-eleven railroad and others like it? I mean, from, we start with the warning, we give them a ticket, they have so many days. I mean, it's, it's gonna, it's a long process.
It is a fairly long process. Our, our code requires a, a first contact. And typically, that first contact isn't necessarily the first contact. We, we are not, we are investigating the property, if you will, taking some pictures. Typically, you know, you're trying to get to there before it, it escalates, right? If it's a junk vehicle or some garbage pile in the yard or some appliance or something like that, we try to get to those as soon as we can, so they don't escalate. They don't kind of compound. If we can get ahead of it, get out there in a, in a reasonable amount of time, we can get to these before they get too bad. If they do get to that point or they don't respond, we have to build a case, essentially. You have to show that you have given them an opportunity through a voluntary correction agreement to clean up the site. And then a notice of violation at that point, giving them a fourteen-day, I think, window to have the site cleaned up. If they don't do that, and then you can schedule a hearing within thirty days after that notice of violation. The hearing examiner hears that, the quasi-judicial process, third-party hearing examiner. And that hearing examiner will hear, hear the, the case presented by, by city staff. The property owner, if they feel the need to be present and state their case, hearing examiner might give them more time to clean it up or address and abate the issues. Typically, if they don't address that in a certain amount of time, but in my experience, it's been anywhere from two weeks to thirty days. And then that authorizes the city go in for abatement, and then it's scheduling that abatement and coming up with money, right, to perform that abatement by city staff or contracting that out. So at that front timeframe, it could be at best, you know, forty-five, sixty days. It could be much longer if you have difficulties finding a property owner, making contact, securing the building in this case. Sometimes squatters get onsite. So you have police enforcement as well. We don't send our non-commissioned staff or code enforcement officers or planners in this case that have been performing these code enforcement activities out to sites such as this, when we don't know what they're walking into.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for Mark? Comments? Thank you, Mark.
Hey, I have one.
Go ahead.
Is it, I'm pretty sure this is the way it works. If the, if the junk that people have in their house out in their yard, they're in front of their fence exposed. We can't, we can take care of that if they have a fence with stuff in it in their backyard. We can't do anything for that, right?
Typically, if it's in, if it's in sight, so it could be in sight of the neighboring property or from the public way. Absolutely. It could be, it could be addressed through the nuisance code.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Obviously, if it's not seen, it's much more difficult to enforce upon, but if it's seen and, and can be addressed, certainly.
All right.
Comments? At this time, members. This time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, where do we find a public comment tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Nellie Peoples.
Hi, my name is Nellie Peoples. This is my son Johnny. My husband Tyler looks for the sheriff's office, so he couldn't be here tonight. I'd like to thank you for your time. We are residents of the city of Shelton and have lived on Birch Street for the last four years. We have a beautiful home on nearly an acre that. The deer visit frequently, just as frequently we have had issues with the foot traffic coming from the library trail. Our first week in our home and then one girl on drugs entered our home late at night. She, since then, we have had our cars broken into several times. People have came on our property. We have attended city council meetings in the past and the trail was closed for a short while. Our street was quiet and safe once again. This did not last long with traffic and crime that comes with it returned. This month, our security camera caught a masked man trying to break in our home at three AM. After he tried several doors, he saw the camera and left. Our neighbors were not so fortunate. Their house was broken into while they were sleeping. On that same night, another house was hit and a car window broke and that car gone through. Many homes on Birch have sold, some due to these concerns. We are asking action to be taken so our street can be safe once again. So we can sleep without fear, let our kids play outside. Without supervision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judy Denny.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Judy Denny and I'm a resident of Shelton. My husband and I moved here. In November of twenty twenty one. And as Nellie pointed out, on June twentieth, sometime in the early morning, somebody broke into our home while we were sleeping in our home. And quietly left. And the next morning we woke up and all of a sudden I'm thinking. Where's my mirror? And I thought, geez, that's weird, you know, and I was kind of in shock. And then I turned around and a lamp was missing and then a statue was missing that's about this high. And you just are in shock at first. I called the cops and they came over and we subsequently found other things missing. And you think you say to yourself and to other people, well, you know, at least we weren't hurt and our animals were safe. But that's just hyperbole because I have not had a decent night's sleep except last night. It was the first time. I worried about people coming back in, how they got in. Since then, we have secured our doors better. We have extra locks. I've got a surveillance system and I still. Am traumatized by some creep of creeps in my house deciding what things they're going to take so they can sell them. So they can buy drugs and they're coming up, as she said. On that shortcut from the library, coming up into our streets. And I found out from a neighbor who walks their dog. That we were the fifth person in less than ten days. As somebody had tried to come into our homes or burglar risers. And I've sat here and listened to all of you. This is my first time here and how many things you want to have sophisticated and and made better. And this is an issue that I think can be resolved. It's been that gate has been closed before. And we need to stop them from coming up. I don't want my house so secure that they go to my neighbor's house. I want them stopped. And that securing that gate is possibly the problem will be solved. At least we'll slow them down. And we also have. A safe house. I know, not safe house, halfway house. That was built a couple of blocks away from us. I think it's it was got finished sometime last spring. Nobody ever came around and let us know that that was even happening. And here we are in a city that has the third highest crime rate behind Tukwila and Yakama. And we should know about these people that are moving into our community. I know that none of you would want them as your neighbor. And I am asking you to do something if you can that's within your possibility. Of shutting down that gate and not allowing them to come into our neighborhood. I don't even want them in anybody else's neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you.
Next is Dean Barry. Dean Barry here.
Uh, yes, I wish you the draw like.
And we have Mary Gilson.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager and people here. I have, I have one thing to say and I I I sympathize with the people. That have been speaking of the homeless and we do have a problem in this city. We have to start at the beginning on this problem. It isn't about how we're gonna house them, where we're gonna put them, what are we gonna do with them? If we don't find a way to get some more money into the city so that we can hire more officers to get out there. And find out where these drugs are coming from, where the guns are coming from and start at the bottom and work up. We're not going to be able to solve this problem. Because they're gonna want their drugs and they're gonna keep doing what they're doing. To get the drugs if we don't stop and find out. Who the culprit is that's bringing these drugs in. And and these drugs even go to the children. Fentanyl is such a a big problem nowadays. We have to start at the bottom and work up and maybe we'll be able to. Curb some of the problems here and. I'm not cold hearted because I've been on the street. I know what it's like. I know how hard it is out there. But people, people that are listening here. If somebody is on the corner and they say they need money because they're hungry, buy them a hamburger. But if you give them money, you're giving them the money to go ahead and keep buying the drugs to make them the drug addict that goes out and then wants more to break into your house to get more money. So you contribute to the problem. Instead of if they're hungry, buy them something to eat. Don't give them the money so that they can. Go out and get more drugs or get more alcohol and get high or whatever they're doing to break into the homes. If they break into the homes, they want the money because they want the drugs. So let's start at the bottom and let's work up and. And maybe we can start solving a little bit, a piece of the pie, a little bit at a time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Eric. I've been a many dollars.
When we're done with the list, we'll we'll call on people.
Next is Sarah Stone.
Hello, my name is Sarah Stone. I live in the city of Shelton. I'd like to start by saying how fortunate I am to live in this part of the world and how much I enjoy beautiful town. However, I would like to address the ever growing problem with vandalism and my concerns for public safety. Vandalism to the cars parked on Franklin Street near Borough Park has been on the rise with broken mirrors and windows that I'm sure cost the victims a good deal of money to fix, though I doubt the perpetrators were ever held accountable. Just last month, two razor blades were set in one of my car tires while parked at that location. And though the incident cost me only my free time and good humor for the evening, I can only think how lucky it is that I did not need to commute somewhere or I would have been in real trouble. I also see a considerable amount of vandalism in town. The broken and boarded windows are an ever present blight, not to mention the trash, discarded feud and human debris that litter our street. Were you to take a survey, I'm sure the local shop owners would tell you how disgusted they are at having to clean up after the people who have camped in their alcoves at night. Which brings me to a conversation I overheard between two volunteers collecting trash the other day under the big tree by the post office. One suggested separating to cover more ground and the other preferred to maintain within the safety of numbers. It's appalling to think that anyone in town should fear for their safety in broad daylight and I honestly couldn't help but re. Relate to the sentiment. I walk through town every day and I've felt my share of intimidation at the hands of the unbalanced homeless people. I have been shouted at daily. I have been frequently followed and I've even been chased on two occasions. I often need to tuck into a business to spare myself the further barrage of verbal harassment. I question who these people are and more pointedly where they came from. Many of them certainly do not act like members of the community. And I wonder if Community Lifeline keeps any kind of record of the people receiving services there and do they have any idea who have. They have illegally camping in the park outside. I know many of the new faces I see onboarding the unmarked buses are drawn here for the various services and stay for the free food. And I wonder if there are regulations for this. Do the volunteers supplying meals in Borough Park have a permit to do that? Because they certainly draw a crowd and it doesn't seem to concern them that that crowd sticks around after they have left. I need to reiterate that I love this town and I understand that no one size fits all solution to this ongoing problem can be found. But these issues are left unaddressed and apathy will be the cause of this town's demise. Thank you very much.
Next is Donna Amarillas.
Hello, my name is Donna Amarillas. I have been living in Shelton for the last two and a half years. I want to speak about the excessive gun related crimes that keep occurring in my community. It happens too frequently and I want to bring it to your attention so that something can be changed. The first time, the first crime occurred in August of twenty twenty one, when my vehicle was vandalized right outside my home. My surveillance camera captured the sound of a gunshot. Both driver and passenger windows were blown out. I was extremely terrified by that situation. The second crime happened a few months later in October of twenty twenty one, when I heard a single gunshot. This was due to a negligent officer mishandling a firearm. This incident again was very close to my home and it scared myself and my neighbors. The most recent crime happened last month in June. In broad daylight, I heard the sound of not one gunshot, but multiple gunshots. In my neighborhood, based on what I witnessed, I believe it might have been a drive by situation. I live within blocks of the police station and the Mason County Sheriff's Office. You would think that this area would be feel the safest. Them being so close to the police department. How can three gun related crimes happen within the span of one city block? Perhaps if there was more police presence, it might deter criminal deter criminals from committing crimes like this in my neighborhood. I love this community, but this is a serious concern. Gun related crimes should not be taken lightly. I speak for myself when I say I want to live in a community where. I don't have to normalize the sound of them fire. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Dunkel.
Good evening, Steve Dunkel, Mason County Auditor. So ballots are out and my staff has been working the phones with a number of city council candidates in this coming election whose. Statements as candidates and photographs are not in the voter's pamphlet. And so I just want to remind everybody that it's really important to me and to our office that voters have all the information that they need. To make great decisions as they exercise their sovereign. Their power as sovereign citizens. And so we go to great lengths to put information out on the auditor's website. Candidate filing information, which has all the applicable deadlines and milestones. The administrative rules for candidates, which are per RCW. And approved by our canvassing board as well as a guide for candidates. So. We hope that this information will help candidates have and access all the information. They need to get their information in the voter's pamphlet. But I want to point out, it's the candidate's responsibility. To submit that information on time. And for example, in this election, we've got eighty candidates in this primary for different different positions. And so our election staff is focused on taking the information that's received. Making sure that it fits the criteria for the guidelines and the requirements and start to lay things out so that it can be printed and included in in the ballots. Some of the candidates were, I think, caught by surprise that their information was not in the voter's pamphlet. And they were wanting to know, how come nobody called me, right? That's not the auditor's office responsibility. Quite humbly and respectfully, it's the candidate's responsibility to proactively call. My office to make sure that the information's been received, that it meets the requirements. It's the criteria and is good to go for inclusion in the voter's pamphlet. So. I apologize to those who were running for office for the first time or have are running for office. For the first time in a while and where some of these things are new to them, but that is the current the current system we have. And as we. Look to the next set of elections in twenty twenty four, we're going to be reviewing our administrative rules for potential up. Updates and improvements to make some of those responsibilities more clear so that people aren't caught by surprise. So. Just want everybody to know that's what happened. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having Judith Weyberg.
Thank you. Time tonight. I wasn't going to just read the comments. I do want to leave a copy with the board and the mayor and I ask that these comments be entered into the official minutes, please. But in interest of time, I am going to leave it. It's regarding health and safety issues created by users of the Community Lifeline Shelter. My husband and I live next door to the Community Lifeline Shelter in Shelton. Since the shelter has moved into our neighborhood, there has been increasing crime, threats, assault and other health and safety. Hazards to our residents in the near vicinity of the shelter. This was always a safe and peaceful neighborhood before the shelter located next door to our home. Our property has been in my family for over half a century and I cannot recall a single incident when the police were called prior to the shelter moving in to our neighborhood. The Episcopal priests promised us years ago that this would never be a permanent shelter. He was only asking us not to object to letting people stay in the building only when the temperatures fell below freezing. Now, how has it been allowed to evolve into a full time homeless shelter? In addition, the hearings examiner denied the request to expand the capacity to fifty beds. Yet it is my understanding that this increase has now been approved by the city. Is this true? And how was this allowed to happen without any public input? Below our examples of incidents we face daily since the shelter has moved into our neighborhood. Note, I am including people from the homeless camp at Brewer Park when I speak about shelter users. Because they camp at the park to stay close to the free food and other services provided by the shelter while still being free to take drugs and drink alcohol without the constraints of staying at the shelter. We can see clearly into the alley in the park from our upstairs window and watch people constantly using drugs, dealing drugs and drinking alcohol. My husband was assaulted by a man who used the shelter simply because he was walking up the steps to the shelter and I see my my time is very short. Do you ever allow additional time? Okay, I will wrap this up by saying we have both had a husband has been actually assaulted, which results arrested resulted in jail time to the person. I have been physically threatened. Our dog has been threatened to be poisoned just a couple of days ago, a homeless man walking by instead of just walking by, he stood and threatened my dog and then ended up. Screaming at me and my dog before he finally left. So. I'm sorry if I get emotional about this topic. Our whole way of life, my retirement, I worked in public health for almost four decades. And there are some serial health and safety violations. Please do not wait for someone to get seriously hurt or killed.
Thank you. Want to give those to the city manager and helmet copies for everybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rod Whitaker.
Yes, my name's Rod Woodaker and I'd like to speak about the homeless situation here. As council members here and the, my understanding that the city is responsible for the homeless shelter. Well, as it stands right now, all of you failed in your responsibility to protect Shelton and provide adequate care for the citizens of Shelton. When we came over here at six o'clock to come to the meeting, there was three officers there at the park. Constant thing, that's, the park is a mess. You guys denied responsibility by not doing what needs to be done. The shelter needs to be moved, does not need to be downtown. There's got to be another place for it to go. If you guys have not done what's responsible with going on at that shelter. There's constant crime in the neighborhood, our cars have been vandalized. If you go over there right now, it reeks of urine. There's no places, no sandicats. There's syringes everywhere, there's fighting, screaming, yelling going on twenty-four seven over there. Last time I justified it, one of these things I laid out sixteen foot taped together with all the costs of six months to that shelter for thirty people. Shelton cannot afford to let that go on any longer. You have to find a new place for that shelter, period. It's not working. You guys have all failed in your responsibility to take care of that situation that's going on and on and on. You guys talk about it, you're going to do that, nothing's changed, communication has fallen. It's just a complete utter mess. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we have one person, one two, listed as Stacy G.
Hello, thank you. Let's see, my name's Stacy Gilson and I live on, in Shelton on West Birch Street. And I live just a block from the top of the Library Hill Trail. And I've heard some recent chatter in the neighborhood about asking the council to close the trail. And I want to take this opportunity to strongly voice my opposition to this idea once again. I was opposed when it was closed temporarily in 2019 as well. We actually chose to buy our home in city, in town, in part because of that trail. My son was going into ninth grade and he started attending choice. And he walked to school every day because of that trail and felt safe doing so. Then when he got jobs downtown, he walked to and from work on that trail until he was able to drive. I also accessed this trail when I was physically able to on a regular basis. And the trail provides a much quicker, more convenient pedestrian access to, to all of the community members. People going to the hospital, to OCC, to access the library, bus lines, the municipal buildings, meetings like these, resources and other retail businesses downtown. Now it's been much of every day working out my yard and I see and experience the value of having this trail open to the pedestrian public. I see at least a dozen, usually many more of my Shelton neighbors walking past my house on their way to or from the trail. Sometimes it's families with kids, sometimes a group of young people. There are joggers, there are bicyclists, people running errands, going to work or going to shops. Just my neighbors who are going about their business. This trail is essential and rather than considering closing it, I hope that Shelton will step up and take care of it. And by that, I mean council members and all of us too. The Library Hill Trail does not, or does need some, some TLC to keep it cleaner and to improve its accessibility. Erosion and misuse has damaged the trail and that right now is the only reason that I can't physically walk that trail. Not because of any fear of anyone I might meet. As I'm sure you're aware, there's many recent studies showing that the best and most cost-effective way to reduce crime within a community is to provide and improve everyone's access to trees and green spaces. Essentially, the closing of this trail will only deter or punish legitimate lawful use of this intentionally designed public trail by the pedestrians who need to come and go. The closing of public spaces is a shame and is detrimental to the community connection and engagement. I strongly believe in keeping public spaces free and accessible to all, even when that is the more challenging thing to manage. Please do not close Library Hill Trail. It's not the root cause of criminal activity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, audience, you wanted to speak?
Can I just stand right here? I have just a few questions.
We don't answer questions.
For West Alder and I understand that they're putting halfway out at the end of the block. And I was wondering why the people in the area were not made aware of this fact that it was going in there. There's a lot of children and a lot of bum traffic out there already. And what's left that's going on is just going to amplify everything. And I was wondering why the people weren't made aware of what was going on in our neighborhood.
Gary, if you don't mind stating your name for the, for the record, and then I can answer any questions after the meeting if you want.
My name is Gary Wolken, W O L B E N.
And any questions directed I can answer after the meeting if you like?
Okay, see you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll do it right here. Dean, I didn't see what was first.
I've never deemed you a lifelong Shelton resident. I've never smiled so big while being so pissed. Thank you to everybody that showed up and has been saying everything that I've been preaching.
Dean, talk to us, please.
No, I'll talk to whoever I want. Thank you, Eric. Do not interrupt me. Do not interrupt me.
Talk to us.
Don't interrupt. Anyway, Donna, can you put some minutes back on there? So anyway, this has gotten out of control. You know it and I know it. Brewer Park had an individual, that was their executive director. Three days before a meeting with a county commissioner, huh, she resigned. I wonder why? Can't imagine that. We just had a shelter in Kitsap County closed down. Anybody seen an increase in people? I sure have. I just had to have somebody else trespass from my property. People are sick and tired of walking around shit and piss. And normally I wouldn't get this way and I wouldn't fricking talk like this, but I'm tired of it and you guys should be tired of it. Joe, do something. Eric, put your money where your mouth is. Do something. Okay, I know that the Waldens already had to come and talk about this park last year and the year before when they had their area. And you guys had to shut the park down. I agree with the lady on there. We shouldn't have to shut an area down. You should just do your job. And some of those jobs are passing a shopping cart ordinance so that we don't have the bullshit running around town. Getting the no lay law passed and enforcing the camping, the no street camping. How long can you camp? We got one code enforcement officer that does like triple duty. You know, there's a trailer sitting in the Red Apple parking lot and it's been there for over a month. There's kids in there. There's two kids in there. Why isn't our code enforcement officer calling DSHs? Where are the people to take care of that stuff? You guys are our line. You're our defense for this stuff. And y'all are just kicking back like it doesn't happen. I am so happy that these people are here making these statements. Can you just imagine if there was one individual with some funding that got all of these individuals together? And we have, what do they call those things? A class action lawsuit? The city doesn't have any money now. Now they've got to defend themselves. Why do we want to go there? Just do what you were elected to do. That's what you got to do. You want to start with a foundation? Mary said she doesn't want to be cold-hearted. I do. I am cold-hearted. Okay, if you're a druggie, a thief, you're going to defecate, you're going to have a negative impact on my, my neighborhood, my community. Damn right, Skippy. I'm cold-hearted. Now you want me to help you up? I'll help you up all day long. You need something to eat? You need a bed? You need some furniture? I'll help you out. I'll donate. I'll do whatever I need to do. But we're tired of it. So listen.
Dean.
Thank you. I'll figure out how to get my name out there. I'm about to start the list to talk. Anyway, I just moved up here on Laurel Street just recently. Last night, my husband said, come out to the backyard. I want to show you something. There were cigarette butts on my porch in the back. It's not fenced in. It will be fenced in Friday and a security system will be up. I just moved there and it frightens me already to sleep at night with a cigarette butt underneath my window.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak tonight? Say your name and if you're from the city or county or elsewhere.
I'm Dr. J. Charlotte Rad. I'm from Shelton, moved here with my family and just four weeks ago. I'm an educational psychologist, so I wanted to start by quoting George Washington, the namesake of our state. He said in seventeen ninety, "Knowledge is in every country the surest basis of public happiness." So whatever sort of problem there may be is homelessness or lack of education, hunger. Knowledge, I contend, is the solution. So knowledge is a very special thing. So unlike, say like I went up to Ace and bought a pack of bolts, package of bolts. No one else can buy that. It's called a zero-sum game. If I get something, no one else can have that. Like if you have a pie, I can have a slice of pie. No one else can have that slice of pie. But that's not how knowledge is. Just because one person learns that two plus two equals four, that doesn't mean that no one else can learn that. Knowledge is a very special thing. Knowledge is infinite. So that's why I wanted to introduce as a potential solution to talk about whenever there is any sort of problem, crime or homelessness or anything, talk about a knowledge-based economy. I wanted to end by quoting from the book of Proverbs, chapter four, verses five through seven. Acquire wisdom and understanding. Wisdom is the most important thing and with all you acquire, acquire understanding. Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the audience like to speak tonight? General public comment? Yes, Mary.
My name's Mary Eagleson. Thank you, Eric and Joe and the rest of the city council for letting me speak tonight. I would like to thank our auditor, whom I spoke with earlier today. Yes, there was a mix-up in the pamphlets and the knowledge of putting our information. There were a couple of us.
We really can't get into.
I'm not. I had permission to speak from him earlier and I'm not putting anybody down.
You can speak about a topic, but, but not, not a candidate or a resident of the office. Okay.
I'm not saying anything about that. I'm just saying that there was a mix-up. And that I had spoken to him and, and I just wanted people to know that if there was a glitch and that that information didn't get out to the people and not mentioning any names here that did not get that information in there. That's all I'm trying to say. And, and the second thing I would like to say is I respect our council and I think they're doing the best job that they can. Our city is trying to do the best that they can. And the one thing that, when I get attacked for my way of thinking, and yes, I am a little kind-hearted. Like I said, I think the problem started the beating, gaining in and you have to work up on the homelessness. I know there are problems. I know it's bad, but nothing aggravates me more for somebody to come up here and disrespect our city council and our mayor. And I think you're doing a good job. I know there's a lot of work that has to be done and I think the public needs to know. I want to know where the public was. We had a homeless committee. And if I'm not mistaken, in the paper, it said that people could write in to the city council and give us ideas. And nobody comes to the city council with ideas of how to solve this. They expect seven people out of this whole city and our city manager to solve all their problems. That's not why we have a city council. They're not here to solve every problem. We have a whole town. It's called united we stand, divided we fall. And people, if you have ideas, you have a way to solve this thing, get off your TVs, get off your tablets, get off your phones, sit down with a pencil and paper and come up with an idea and come up with solutions so that you can present it to the city council, present it to our city manager and maybe they could go forward and do something. But you can't just come here and yell at seven people and expect them to solve all the problems because that's not how it works. And the people of the city, let's come together, get some ideas, get some thoughts so that we can solve the problem.
Thank you, Mary. All right, come on. Name it, city or county.
Hello, my name is Sean McElhenney. I'm a resident of Shelton. I appreciate everybody being here and listening to us today. My wife and I own a business down on railroad. And so we're familiar with the defecation and the needles and the issues with the homeless downtown. But what I'm going to speak about right now is that trail. My wife and I live on North Twelve Street, which is just off of that main road. I understand public spaces. I've used that trail numerous times myself with my dog. However, the city has invested a lot of money in Olympic Highway North with that beautiful pathway up and down, which gives plenty of space to walk up and down and enjoy getting downtown from that upper area. The crime, the issue with, I guess criminals, indigents and the homeless passing through there can be seen morning, noon and night. We walk our dog, we're just trying to walk in the neighborhood twice a day. Threats, threats of being accosted, finding needles, issues like that is a daily issue. And this is across Shelton, but as a resident of North Twelve, my concern right now is that trail. It's constantly littered with trash, with drug paraphernalia. You have individuals living up behind the water tower up there. If there was a better way to use that space without it being a highway or crime, I would say go for it. But at this point, we have a beautiful path that takes you from uptown, up, up above to downtown with that nice crosswalk that's up there, that's those beautiful lights that lets traffic know it was well done. I think we can probably start to push people that direction and use a lawful trail or path up and down, which would be great, which us citizens, all of you in the city, have paid for that through taxes. So if we could close that down, that would be fantastic for the neighbors up there of the crime and the issues and the assaults and everything like that. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us today and we'll be able to win it, believe me.
All right, come on. If you have a question, you can ask after the meeting.
Oh, okay, well.
If you have a statement.
Should have had public comment.
Public comments once already.
I can answer that after if you like.
Okay, I thought somebody else spoke twice or three times.
Once during public comment, once during comments for agenda items or any other agenda item. But I should speak to you after.
All right, anyone else? Okay, does council have any new items for discussion? All right, our next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, July eighteenth PM. This meeting is adjourned.